Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Landry Town Council meeting for November fourteenth, 2022. Could you please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. For those of you who didn't attend the Veterans Breakfast on Saturday, it was quite the showing. They're up to, you know, just shy of 500 people for it. It was a great event. And once again, for our veterans and those who serve us here in abroad, a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to start with public comment. If there's anyone who would like to approach the council, now would be the time. Hi, sir. Name and address, please.
Thank you. Doug Thomas, 143 Mammoth Road. And since you already mentioned that, I just wanted to extend my thanks for the Veterans Breakfast to Katie Sullivan and all the people and students that put things together. It was a fantastic event. As a veteran, I appreciate that very much, and all the veterans appreciate it. So, good job. Thank you. And it was a great event. Just wanted to give out my thanks to that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any else for public comment? Name and address, sir?
Daniel Bouchard, O'Connell Drive, Landry.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make mention about the budget hearing you had on Saturday, the workshop you had.
If you use the D-word, we're going to have an issue.
The what?
If you use the D-word, we're going to have an issue.
What's the D-word?
Okay, well, let's see what happens.
So, anyway, when I was watching it, I almost had to call 911 at one point because I was like, wow. Mike is hitting it right on the nail, okay? When he presented the budget to you, he's trying to get these line items funded properly. Like, I've been bringing this up for years, okay? And the answer has always been, oh, it's a bottom-line budget. It's a bottom-line budget. Yeah, I understand it's a bottom-line budget. But, you know, that's one of the reasons why I had asked years ago about how many open positions do we have? All right? Because it did come out that you have positions that are there just to balance the budget. And, you know, that's not what they should be there for. You know, when I'm listening to the police, the fire, and everybody in highway saying, this is how much it costs us for oil changes, then we should be funding that line item for that, okay? So, you know, like I mentioned to Mike a while ago, I was glad to see that he's doing that. I think it's important that, you know, we have constantly talked about transparency and transparency, and I think this is the way to go. I mean, I know you're talking about eliminating positions on the police department. Four of them is what...
All right, so just so we're clear, we're not eliminating any positions. We're properly doing the funding lines.
Okay.
Head count is still the same.
All right, well, I just don't...
And you can probably figure out what the D-word is now.
I just don't want to see, you know, how... I don't want to see any positions cut, all right? I mean, when I worked for the town years ago, and when I went ready to retire, I did the same thing at the budget process, okay? The council was talking about cutting. We have to make some adjustments and all this. They were talking about cutting personnel, you know, that had just been hired. I left my house and I came to the meeting and I said, "Don't take my money, because I'm retiring," all right, "and save that instead of, you know, cutting somebody out, you know, at the bottom of the barrel." Because I know for years, having worked in this town, having lived in this town, that that's how the budgets operate, okay? Chad decides he's going to retire, we're not going to say anything, all right? And we're going to use that money for something else. So, I was glad to see Mike, you know, come out and do this whole budget process and, you know, I know that we have a police chief who is new in it, and I give him credit. He's walking into something that he has to, you know, explain to everybody and say, hey, this is how much I need, you know? And hopefully, the council will, you know, understand that this is not his doing. This is done like this for years. So, that was my issue on the budget.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Bouchard. Anyone else for public comment? If you so choose.
I'd like to talk about the tax rate discussion that is a continuation from last week. Is it still a continuation from last week?
It's public comment. You can talk about it.
So, I know that we were talking...
Name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. Christine Perez, 5 Wesley Drive. I apologize. I know we're talking about 10 cents, and correct me if I'm wrong about numbers for the tax rate. And I know we talked about different things that had already been done. And I know we talked about the fact that it was going to lower our reserves. I know you call it something different. I'm just going to refer to it as reserves now because it's easier for me. And I know it was brought up that we've already given the veterans money by increasing the credit that they can get. That was 974 individuals. And personally, as far as I'm concerned, there's nothing we can give our veterans to pay them back for what they've done for us. And I know we mentioned about the seniors, that the seniors' rates have been elevated and the amount of money. And I understand that that's not giving them deductions on their tax rate. It's actually lowering the value of their house. But that was 184 individual homes. I believe there's around 24,000 people here in town, roughly. If... And I know you already put money into the fund balance, but the town went up by nine cents. It got six cents back from the county. We may not get that six cents back from the county next year. The school, it's my understanding, went up by 54 cents, but the state gave them 47. The state may not be able to give them that 47. And right now, that would mean that our tax rate actually went up by 63 cents on the thousand. I'm asking that, yes, you take the $500,000 away from the reserve and lower the tax rate. And I understand that when it comes time next in March for all of the warrant articles, that you may not have money to say, well, it's zero on your tax rate. But I think people are not misled, but I think they're... They just don't understand, a lot of people, that that's your tax money, and maybe you would look at it differently. I think Deb brought up a very good point last time, that maybe people need to know what actually it's going to cost them to do these particular warrant articles. And since we are a zero-based budget tax, they will actually know what their taxes are going to be and what we're paying for. And I know if something comes up, we have a catastrophe and this building falls down or something like that, you may have to take out a loan, but we don't know what next year is going to be. Right now, things are tough everywhere. And I think the people that we need to pay attention to are the people who own homes, get up every day, go to work, put gas in their car, go to the grocery store, and are now being attacked with outrageous utility bills. So, I please would like you to really consider hard to consider bringing that tax rate down and that additional 10 cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Tony DiFrancesco, 1 Cheshire Court. Mr. Chair, is it going to be... Will there be... Is it a public hearing when you talk about the tax rate?
No.
Can I talk about it then, or I need to talk about it now?
It's not a public hearing.
Okay. So, another person's opinion, taking 10 cents off the tax rate makes no sense. Does it make fiscal sense? Does it make financial sense? Doesn't make common sense? For a lot of reasons. One of the biggest reasons is you all have hired a financial advisor, that's to my right, your left, who, it seemed to me at the meeting last time, was saying, "Don't do it." And he gave you good reasons to not do it. If you're not going to listen to your financial advisor that makes a healthy paycheck, then you might as well get rid of that paycheck and hire a bookkeeper for much less money. I think it's important, when you get into the weeds and when you have the kind of training and experience that people have that do Mr. Campo's position, that you really need to pay attention and you really need to listen. It makes no sense to me to reduce every single house, every single person in town's tax rate when many of them don't need it. And you're going to be chasing that money and kicking the can down the road yet again, and next year, it's going to cost you 20 cents to recover. So, as one person, I would say, please don't do it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else for public comment?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, council. Bob Slater, 1 Stonehenge Road, and one of your school board members. There was some conversation at the end of the last meeting regarding tax rate and the school portion, as well as the town's portion. And there wasn't any opportunity for me to kind of speak to that regarding the school side. But I would like to just clarify, over the last three years, the school really looks at our fund balance at the end of June and what we can do for our taxpayers, and that come August after our audit is done, year after year. And over the last three years, we've given over 1.9 million back to the taxpayers. Yep, granted, 2021, '22 was 1.3 due to COVID, but... And a lot of ESAR funds offset some of that cost, but a lot of the buses didn't run substitute teachers and that. So, I just wanted to let you guys know. I know you're always the ones that get the phone call, you know, how come my taxes are going up and that, but we are, as a board, I know diligently, working with our staff and superintendent, especially after the last couple of years, trying to play some catch-up with education increases. Inflation has raised wages, cost of materials, as you guys find through your departments too, that we will... Our budget isn't out till the 22nd of this month, so I will... And I know there's some talk about, you know, coming to the meetings. I'd love to have you there, ask questions. More questions, the better. If you need a digital copy of our book, just reach out to the superintendent or Lisa McKenny, our business agent. She'd be glad to send it to you so you have all the electronic documents and attend all our budget meetings. But we will always do our part. We're fighting a double-edged sword like you folks are. And we feel it when you get the brunt of the calls. It's not fair. A lot of the cost is on the school side. But we're trying to make up for lost learning. As you know, some of our buildings are 70, 60, 50 years old, so we've put a plan in place for the next 20, 25 years to start taking care of those. And it's just, you know, we had a project, for instance, Phase Two of the parking lot was approved by the voters two years ago. $275,000 to repave the second half of the parking lot. Last winter, the roof of Matthew Thornton opened up. It was leaking in December, January. It was $356,000 on a 72-year-old building for probably a five- to six-year fix on that building. That ate up that project. So, this is the stuff we're trying to deal with internally, as well as the education part, to get our students caught up from the last two years. So, we will always do our part to help the taxpayers and you folks not take the burden of not knowing what information is needed. So, I will, again, invite you guys to come to all the budget meetings and as well as the public. Please, come ask questions. We will get you the answers. Sometimes it doesn't... You don't like the answers, but we will do everything in our power to give the best education in this town and service the people of this community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Yes? Yes? Name and address, please.
Ann Chappa, 20, Wedger Drive. I was listening to Ms. Perez, and she's right. Not everybody can weather this storm. It's really hitting a lot of people hard, especially it had some form of investment, too. The big drop in the third quarter of this year is hard to make up. Think about that. Not just the lowest-income people, but the people that are just middle-class. They're getting hit hard every day at the grocery store, at the gas station. Still, remember that now. Well, that's not what I came to discuss. I have a question on something that's coming up later, as far as the traffic studies. Should I say something now, or are you going to accept any public comments later?
Unlikely. There'll probably be some... I don't know exactly where this speed limit discussion is going to go. So, but it's unlikely we're going to be accepting comment later, but it is likely that it will cross across multiple meetings.
Okay. Can I ask you a question about, actually, the rules and regulations of committees? Just because, if maybe you can help me out, I was surprised by one thing. On the Traffic Safety Committee, Chad, you're a member of it, right? And as far as what you were discussing, I think you might have an interest in it, personal interest in it. And I wasn't sure how you could, you know, make recommendations, present motions, and vote on it if you do have a personal interest in it. So, that's... I just thought that was odd. Is there any regulations? I mean, I'm used to sitting on the planning board, so I'm not sure about anything having to do with, you know, something like this on a committee.
As has been our policy, I'm not going to address rules and regulations and policies during public comment.
Okay, just...
I'll be happy to look into it.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Going once, going twice. Who are you, young man? Name and address, please.
Ray President, 3 Gary Drive. Obviously, we've got a lot going on, and I don't want to hold things up here. But we've got so much going on with new stuff coming in here, and yet, we've got something to deal with about water and sewer. And personally, I'd kind of like to know where we're at with that because I know we're working on it, but time marches on. In the meanwhile, we're having developers coming in and presenting at least an idea of putting up 11 three-story, high-end buildings at Woodmont Common. And I'm not sure we've got water and sewer there at this time. Shouldn't we, before we proceed with some of these things, make sure we've got water and sewer? Where are we at? I'm not expecting you to answer directly here.
Okay.
But I think it's something we really need to know where we're at. I mean, we've got to look ahead 10 years, and yet, we don't even have anything on the town CIP. Shouldn't we have something on there? I wonder.
Thank you, sir.
Something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, folks, anything else? All right, public comment is closed. I've been asked by the town moderator to give him a few minutes to discuss our most recent election. So, Mr. Kip.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jonathan Kip, 9 Everett Street, town moderator. Just wanted to provide the council and the public with a brief recap of the election just held on Tuesday. We ended the day with 18,764 voters on the checklist, which includes 729 who registered on Election Day at the polls. 12,063 voters voted, and that includes 1,112 absentee votes received. The 12,063 voters is 64% of our registered voters, which matches the statewide average of 65% voter turnout. And I know traffic remains an issue getting to our polling place. Inside, though, we could see that our traffic was consistent all day. We didn't have the typical peaks at, first thing in the morning, at lunchtime, and at dinnertime. It was just a nice steady flow all day. And we have an exceptionally strong election team here in town, to whom I'll be eternally grateful. And our team has very strong active support by all our town departments, the police department, the fire department, Public Works, our volunteers on alert, town administration, thank you very much, Mr. Malaguti, the schools, and even members of the school board. But I also want to acknowledge and thank you as a town council, as a board, and also individually. Each of you were there for the election, pitching in where needed, and for that, we're all thankful. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great job to you as well.
Thank you. Thank you for all of your leadership. Just on that day, just to add a couple of things I had shared with the town moderator, we had multiple people timing us from back-of-line to front-of-line. The longest timing we had from back-of-line to front-of-line was 21 minutes. There were a number of the councilors outside driving golf carts, picking people up. I would love to, after living in this town for 30 years, I would love to see the plateau, as we refer to the dirt parking lot, get paved someday. I mean, I can't believe 30 years later, it's still a dirt lot. People did talk about the traffic. Captain Breen and his team were incredible. They kept it moving all day long. There was at one point that one of the town officials, the attorney general showed up, and one of the town... They must have contacted Homeland Security and contacted one of the leaders in the town, who happened to be sitting in their office, and said to them, you know, there's a traffic problem on Mammoth Road. And they looked outside and says, no, there's not. So, you know, because the traffic had cleared already, because as the moderator mentioned, it was moving all day. It was probably one of the fastest-moving elections I've ever worked. So, my personal thank you to the fire chief, who was with the council, delivering ballots to the vault at 1:30 in the morning. And, you know, and we appreciate all the support that we're getting from all the departments. It was a heck of a day. And thank you to all the councilors who worked their stuff all over the place, all day long, and it was a team effort. So, thank you very much. Okay, with that, we're going to move to the tax rate discussion. So, we finished this discussion with a conversation with our finance director. He has more than strongly advised that he would... His advice would be we should square things up this year. We gave back over $1 million last year. If I use Mr. Slater's numbers, that gives us $9 million that we've given back over the last three years as all three forms of government. And the three forms of government are school, library, and town. Where we're at right now is that we have about $500,000 in the undesignated fund balance. Five million in the undesignated fund balance. We're looking to take 500,000 out?
To make it zero, it would be a little over 500,000, yes.
So, I'm at the height of our undesignated fund balance over the last five or six years. We were up around 9 million at one point, right?
That is correct.
So, we've cut our undesignated fund balance in half. So, I'll hear from the council. Let's hear what you want to do, and then I'll add my own comments. It's out to you guys. So, you have... So, I'll give you choices. I'm trying to make this easy. You can make a motion to lower the tax rate. You can make a motion to leave the tax rate the same. You can't table it. It's been tabled. So, it's got to be addressed tonight so that we can send out the tax bills. Because, you know, as it is right now, the tax bills will probably arrive somewhere... Will probably arrive in the next week to 10 days and be due somewhere between the 20th and the 23rd of December, which is not what anybody wants to see in those dates.
So, for discussion, I'd like to make a motion to reduce the tax rate to last year's figure.
Second. I have a motion in a second. I have a motion on the floor. Discussion.
So, I made the motion because I don't think it's the right time. Everybody, as you heard today, is really suffering, and I don't think it's the time to start, even in the score, I guess. And, you know, I've promised to keep the tax rate down as much as possible while I'm an elected official, and I want to keep that promise. And I don't think $500,000 is going to break us. I really don't. So, that's my two cents.
I echo the same feelings. I feel that we are in a perfect storm, and we have to be conscious of the people who are out there. And it's their money. It's not our money. It's their money, and we have to be good stewards of it and do the right thing and help them through as a team through this time. Some people have a lot of money in their 401Ks, and they're retired, and they can depend on that. And then you have people who don't. And I think it's a community, both rich and poor. We don't want to be an elitist town. We want to be an inclusive town who cares about people who do struggle and people who are too proud to come here and maybe say, I'm struggling, I'm hurting. But I can tell you that I get tons of phone calls. It takes me two and a half to three hours to get through Market Basket because every aisle, someone is broaching me, saying, what's going on? What can we do? How can you help? And this is the only thing that I can come up with. So, I have to say that I am with Joe on this one.
I just don't... If I can just comment to what you just said, Mr. Chairman. I just don't know that, like... I don't know if there's certain circles people go through, you know? I don't know if there's a certain segment of the population that to speak to me, or speak to you, or speak to... I just don't know because it's just been so clear over the past, I don't know, six months, eight months, that...
Couple of years.
The people that I... The circles that I'm in, there's no way. I mean, there's no way I could do it, do it to them, you know? I just... Again, you have to represent the people that you're supposed to represent. So, that's all I'm doing right now, you know? Personally, I could pay the 50 bucks, you know? I can do it. Not a problem. I mean, I'm lucky. You know what I mean? I'm very, very fortunate. But unfortunately, I have to represent the people that are in my circle, and there's lots of them. So, maybe that's the difference between opinions. I'm just hearing a lot of people that I couldn't just look the other way for, you know, so...
Well, Joe, there are people who can overpay, right?
Yeah.
Cover up that cost. If you feel that you have extra money and you want to help, go right ahead.
Mr. Chair, please proceed.
So, last week, the biggest reason why... Well, there's two reasons really why I wanted to push this off another week is... One of it was because it was the first time I heard about it. And I don't like to make decisions that are rash or knee-jerk, and, you know, I try to do... Look at the big picture and see what's best for the community. The other thing is I wanted to hear from our constituents and our people. And I had encouraged, if everyone can remember, I had encouraged people to approach us and discuss it and email the council, email the council as a whole, email the council individual, call us, hit us up on Facebook, whatever, but reach out and communicate where you're at so I know where to stand. And I... My point of bringing that up is, and I wanted to share a tally that I took over the past week, since the completion of the last meeting. Since that meeting, either in person, email, or phone call, I've had, and including tonight's public comment, there had been four people that are in favor, not including the councilors, four people that are in favor, that I personally heard, of pulling the 500-plus out of the undesignated fund balance to offset the tax rate, that 10 cents. There had been 12 that had spoken in favor of keeping it as is. My encouragement is we pack these meetings now. However, our door, our email is in... We're out and about, as Councilor Paul said. She's at Market Basket. Mr. Chairman Farrell has said he shops at Market Basket. I'm at Market Basket, you know? Come to us, talk to us. Let us... I'm at Market Basket, you know, and come to us, talk to us, let us hear these things. But for a number that specifically came up in person and said, you know, twelve, twelve are, are in favor of, of leaving the undesignated fund balance, four are in favor of offsetting the tax rate. Why the disparity? Let's fix that, let's communicate. That's, that's, I need to hear from, we need to hear from, from our people. Thank you.
Okay, so I did hear from Counselor Butler, he is detained and can't get here. He is not voting tonight, but he has indicated to me via text that he favors the Finance Director's recommendation. But he is not voting tonight. So, here's the telling thing for me. You know, I'm the outside guy at the elections, so twelve thousand people walked past me. Not one person asked me about the tax rate. I went to the football game, and there were several thousand people there. And I got a fair handful of people saying, hey, hold the line, you know, you need to hold the line. So, here, here's where my decision comes down to. I just asked the Finance Director a question. We had nine million dollars and we have five million now. We're in the red zone. We cut our savings in half. You know, I, I pay for gas and oil just like everybody else. You know, two and a half years ago, I paid two thousand dollars to heat my house, this year I'll pay five thousand dollars to heat my house. It's not that I don't hear people, it's not that I don't understand. It's a, it's a difficult decision. If we hadn't already given back nine million, and we hadn't already reduced our fund balance by four million, discussion worth having. So, I'll call for the vote. All who's in favor, simply by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Oppose.
Opposed. Motion fails, tax rate's eighteen forty-eight. That means, folks, is that when we tie, the motion fails.
Okay.
All right, next discussion, discussion on eligibility requirements for a commercial industrial tax incentive program.
Mr. Chairman, a couple of meetings ago, I raised with the Town Council the commercial industrial tax exemption program eligibility threshold, which currently, to participate in that program, sits at fifteen million dollars. And there is a, a second tier that entitles a taxpayer to additional tax relief, and that currently is set at thirty million dollars. To date, we haven't had an application under the existing criteria. And this was, this was adopted by the council in June. Obviously, since June, the economic picture has deteriorated considerably, just, just in that time. And I think it's, what, what I heard from different discussions with, with the council and folks in the community is, this is a program that has a lot of promise, a lot of potential. But we might just be pricing almost everybody out of it based on the current eligibility criteria. And so, I'm here before you tonight, based on a consensus that I got a couple of meetings ago, that we should at least examine the eligibility criteria to determine whether they remain appropriate in the current economic state of affairs. I do have for you in your packet some information that was run by the Assistant Assessor for me. This is information about some of our largest taxpayers in town. And we started at the two million dollar area and went up from there. And, and you will see a listing of each taxpayer with a building value above two million dollars, all the way up to the three taxpayers in town who have building values over twenty million dollars. Mr. Chairman, just to refresh everyone's recollection about this program, it is a program that the state authorizes municipalities to extend a tax exemption against new increased value attributable to construction or rehabilitation. So, it is a, whereas when you grant a veteran's credit, or a, probably the better example would be a senior tax exemption, that is against existing value that was being taxed, that now is not being taxed. This is much different. The purpose of the program is to attract industrial users to town and to incentivize them to invest in construction or rehabilitation and granting them a tax, a tax exemption, limited in time, against the increase in that new value. And what I would suggest to you, based on a review of this information, is that there are certainly more businesses that would be eligible to participate in this program, more to reduce the eligibility criteria. I want to emphasize that the information that you have in front of you is for illustration purposes only. In other words, if we were to expand the eligibility criteria for this program, it does not apply to these existing taxpayers, unless they were to construct or rehabilitate in addition to what they're being taxed on now, in addition to what they have there now.
Can I interrupt real quick, please?
Yes.
Just for clarification of your, your most recent statement. So, existing properties, they would, to, to meet the current criteria, which is fifteen million, they would have to do fifteen million of additional improvements, not fifteen million of overall valuation?
That, that's exactly right. As the program is currently constituted, in order to take advantage of the program, they would need to invest fifteen million dollars. And I say invest, that's, that's a little bit of an oversimplification, but they, they would have to construct or rehabilitate that resulted in fifteen million dollars of additional value, based on what they have now.
Just that fifteen plus
Correct.
would be eligible for this program or the total valuation?
Just the fifteen plus.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I, you know, so, I'm not here to suggest to you that you, you should do any, anything in particular. I'm here with additional information, with an economy that has certainly changed since this program was adopted, and with a question whether it makes sense to revisit these eligibility criteria.
We don't have all five of us, I'm, I'm willing, if everyone else is willing to revisit it, more than happy to revisit it, but we'd have to schedule it for the next meeting.
Certainly, and I, just to be clear, I don't have it, I haven't drafted a proposed resolution. It's really for discussion purposes at this point. And, Mr. Chairman, it sounds like your direction is to leave it in that status for discussion at the next meeting.
I'm not giving direction, I'm, what I'm saying is, is that, you know, if the rest of the council is willing to discuss it, I'm happy to discuss anything. It doesn't mean we're gonna do anything, but I'm happy to discuss it, but I'd like to have all five of us here to discuss it.
Certainly.
If that's amenable to the rest of the council, only.
I'm, I'm fine with tabling the discussion. Yeah.
For discussion only, next meeting, if you're gonna come with a discussion, you need to bring us a series of options. I'm not saying that they're recommendations, but they're options.
And how they would break down, please.
Guys, all right with that?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Resolution two oh two-two dash two zero, dissolve exit four A TIF district.
Mr. Chairman, this is something that I came to you on previously as well. There is a authorization for the creation of a TIF district presently on the east side of I- ninety-three in the exit four A area. It was never fully implemented, and the, that authorization is just sort of an empty skeleton at this point that I believe, and the town attorney believes, is not a good practice to have floating around if we don't have an actual TIF. And just for everybody's benefit, the way TIFs, to my knowledge, have always been handled in Lunandary is by development agreement with the, with the developer, which specifies what the, what the improvements are that are subject to the TIF, and what the terms of that TIF are. We don't have any development agreement at this point in time for public improvements that might be financed by way of a TIF on the east side of I- ninety-three. And therefore, it's Attorney Ramsdale's, Ramsdale's recommendation and my recommendation that you adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty, rescinding that authority with the option always to come back and do it when there's an actual proposal in a project before the council.
Yes.
Jim, I agree with Town Manager, we don't keep these open indefinitely, so, you know, I would, I would side with, you know, closing it, dissolving it as a resolution as well.
I'd like to file a motion.
Any further discussion? Please proceed.
I'd like to file a motion to adopt resolution two zero two-two dash two zero to dissolve exit four A TIF district.
Second.
So, it has always been our policy not to leave these TIFs open, like they're left open all over the state. So, with that, I'll call for a vote, all who's in favor, simply by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative, motion carries. All right. Speed limit discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm joined this evening by Director of Engineering and Environmental Services, John Trotier, and Chairman of the Traffic Safety Commission Committee, Bob Ramsey is here as well. And this follows a discussion and some action that took place at the October third Traffic Safety Committee meeting. And at that meeting, there, a couple of things happened. One, there were residents who came to talk about the speed limit on Cala Road, where there is no posted speed limit right now, and therefore, it defaults to the town-wide default speed limit of thirty-five miles an hour. And if I say anything wrong here, I'm sure Mr. Trotier or Mr. Ramsey will jump up and so note. There was a motion that was made and carried to bring before the council tonight, a discussion about lowering the speed limit to twenty-five miles an hour. And you have in your packet the minutes of that meeting, which summarized the discussion. There was also a motion that was made and carried to discuss the speed limit on Sunflower Lane, Sandy Brook Lane, and Acorn Drive. And it's important to note that that motion, although it carried, was in the context of a broader discussion, a recommendation that the council have a broader discussion about what the, what an appropriate speed limit is for these roads in new developments that are accepted, ultimately to be accepted by the town, as, as opposed to potentially just relying on the default speed limit. That is the, the posture of the, of the, of those two matters this evening. I'm happy to take any questions or to direct any of those questions to the two gentlemen who are here to support me on this.
So, we've had two questions on the ballot in the last three to four years regarding speed limits, right?
Correct.
And they were both defeated by the voters.
Correct.
So, the people in the town have said they don't want us to change the speed limit. So, this is coming to, so, let me ask you, before I turn the discussion over to the council, were the counters put out on this, and was everything measured? Do we have all the data?
Mr. Chairman, so, to answer your question, yes, to Cala. There, there, there were two items that were done on, on Cala. In, in twenty twenty-one, at the end of twenty twenty-one, there, there was, the SAM unit was put out there, and readings were taken. And recently, specifically, I think, in the last month or two, there was a directed patrol that was put out to observe and enforce the speed limit on Cala. And there were no violations that were noted at that time.
Okay, so, I'm just gonna repeat back for understanding. So, there was a directed patrol, and there were no violations on Cala. Was anyone, was anyone pulled over?
No.
What did the data say from the, from the, the counter? I don't know what, I, I can't remember what they called that, but...
The SAM unit. Mr. Chairman, the average speed that was noted was eighteen and a half miles an hour. The minimum speed was ten miles an hour, the maximum speed was thirty-seven miles an hour.
Okay. With that, I'll, I'll be quiet and turn it over to the, to the council.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
So, being one of the members of the Traffic Safety Committee, I would agree, if I owned a, a sign-making company where I financially benefited from the production of new signs, that would be a conflict of interest. However, during the Traffic Safety Committee, my proposal was to adjust the speed limits in cul-de-sacs and roads with, that ended in cul-de-sac or dead ends, townwide. And I understand we have had a town-wide discussion and a vote from the people for the overall speed limit, but I'm specifically targeting, targeting those two types of roads, not just Celia, Sunflower, Sandy Brook, or Acorn. The reason why, so, directed patrols and SAM units tell you if there is speeding or not. You'll get a violation if you're speeding, you will not if you don't. My proposal is to reduce the speed limit from thirty miles an hour on roads that end in cul-de-sacs and dead ends to a lower amount. So, again, a directed patrol, the law enforcement officer has the law, thirty miles an hour. If you're breaking that, they can use their discretion to, to enforce that law. However, if you're going below it, there are obviously no violations. So, I feel that a directed patrol and a SAM unit would not render the appropriate action. The reason, one of the, one of the reasons why I'm proposing a lower speed limit on those type of roads is because back on September third, at eleven forty-nine AM, there was a little girl across the street that was hit by a car. Yes, it was my street, no, it was not my child, yes, the child is okay. However, one, there are two out-of-town law enforcement officers that live on that street, in between delivery drivers and buses and, and, and some residents. Yes, thirty miles an hour is the speed limit. However, my proposal is to drop that to help mitigate or lessen the chances of someone getting hurt. That's why, that's all I have.
Yes.
And I think the other thing that, to keep in mind, I think somebody said earlier that on one of the roads, Cala Road
Celia.
Well, one of the roads that doesn't have a posting, so that's automatically thirty-five. So, were the directed patrols, were they counting at thirty-five or thirty? Because in that case, if the people were going by at thirty-two, thirty-three, they weren't speeding, because there's no posting, right? That's what people said, the, if you, if you don't have a posting, it goes to thirty-five?
That, that's, that's my understanding, yes. And so, the, the officers would have been enforcing two thirty-five on, on that directed patrol.
So, that's, I mean, cul-de-sac, dead end, or small road like that, I mean, it's just... No, I, I agree, I agree with Counselor about the reduction, I mean, I think it's, it's only public safety. And, and I also want to echo the point that I remember, maybe I don't remember correctly, but I think that the ballot was to reduce it on the busier roads, right, wasn't it?
Throughout the town.
I think it was like fifty, like fifty-five or something like that out here, and we wanted to bring it to forty-five or thirty-five or something like that.
Right, that was, my understanding is that was specific to one oh two.
It was an extreme change, and, and, I mean, that would just, to me, it would only cause more grief for the police to try to, to try to, you know, protect that road. But, I mean, and we're talking about where children are playing, where there's, you know, very, very rural areas that are, you know, should, the speed should be, should be lower. Look, I mean, there's, there's parts in, in the state where you're on main roads like one oh two, and it's twenty-five miles an hour. And, and I gotta tell you, I got, I got pulled over about two, three months ago, because I'm like going, this is like one oh two, and I didn't see the twenty-five mile an hour speed, speed limit, I was doing thirty-two, thirty-three. And the officer was very nice to me and said, hey, look, this is twenty-five, basically saying, if you want to come through my town, you gotta know where you're gonna be. And I was respectful and, and drove twenty-five, but that's just because that's, that's what they wanted. And certainly, I would think it'd make, make, make a lot of sense to, to do the cul-de-sacs and dead ends. So, I'm in favor of that.
I wish these things were on TV, so that people could watch them and hear what's going on. After going to many of these meetings, this one road, Calia Road, is half-town and half-private. And if it's, the town is only responsible for the speed limit on the town. So, the private one, they're responsible for posting what they want it to be. So, like Cross Farm, just for example, can say, and this is what I... Cross Farm, just for example, can say, and this is what I, I know I've heard it at these meetings many times, can say, we want to set the speed limit in our development at twenty-five miles an hour. And they have the right to do that. This one here is a mixed, which is kind of awkward. So I mean, technically, the town could stay at its townwide thirty-five, and the other half that's not maintained by the town could be at twenty or twenty-five. So that's kind of an odd thing that goes on. And I know I, is, is, is Claudia? I thought he saw her. Oh, there you are. Am I right? Thank you. And I do agree with, you know, protecting people. But the other thing that I learned from going to these meetings is that when they do do these studies, what they find is over fifty percent of the people speeding on these little roads are people who live on these little roads. They're not people cutting through like on Hardy or High Range or Mammoth, you know, going right through like crazy people. These people on cul-de-sacs and dead ends tend to be the people who live on those streets. And I, I think just recently the Safety Committee had done a study with the police. It was over near Anthony, over in that area. And most of the people who were speeding ended up being people who live in that neighborhood. And I just wanted to bring that. And that's why I really wish these things were up there so people would see. And I, I know that Chief Bernard has said many times, people think cars are going faster than they really are. When you stand there and see a car go whizzing by you, and it's very close, it seems like it's going a hundred miles an hour, but in fact, it's really only going thirty. And there's a lot of things that come into play. So I don't have an issue one way or another. I really don't. But I did want to bring out the facts that I knew from going to these meetings and listening to what the safety people who are, who do this for a living tell us. So thank you.
Bob, you want it to be heard?
Yeah. Bob Ramsey, twenty-six Elwood Road.
Could you just come up to... Bob, could you come up to one of the microphones? They, they'd like to be able to record these.
Two things. One, to rebate something that happened a number of years ago. We got a call on a cul-de-sac in town where the speed limit was about thirty-five in those days. And we got a call from some people living on the road that there was people traveling at fifty-five miles an hour on the road, they said. So we did some discussion and went down and took a look at it. Turned out that the people who were speeding in the road were two girls that lived in the house at the end of the cul-de-sac, who were late for work most mornings, and they were bombing out of there. So as Deb says, a lot of the times, it's the residents. Having said that, if we're going to do this for the roads we've talked about in the motion, then we should be doing it for every cul-de-sac and dead end in the town. Because if we don't, I'm going to get buried in phone calls from the people that want the same thing that we're doing for those particular cul-de-sacs. I'm not, I'm not for this because I think it's going to cost us some money because of the signs and the cost of them and the putting them up. And essentially, I have a lot of problems with having a lot of different speed limits on a lot of different parts of the town, because it makes it hard for the officers who are enforcing these laws to keep track. They've got to constantly be aware of what the speed limit is on the road that they're on. So final comment is if we're going to do this for the roads we're talking about in the motion, then we should consider doing it for all the roads in town that end in dead ends or cul-de-sacs. And I also have something I'd like to give to you guys after this is over, so you can have it for future reference.
Thank you, Bob. Oh, Mr. Trottier. Good evening. How are you?
Very good. How are you?
Did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, I, again, as you will see in, in those meeting minutes, I was, I was the lone dissenter of the recommendation. And again, I think if we're going to do this, there needs to be some engineering study put to it and have an idea of why we're doing it. Because just as Bob says, you're going to want twenty-five, you're going to want fifteen, you know, it's just going to go around. And there's going to be some rhyme or reason why we're doing this.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Of course.
So when you said engineering studies, and this is going to sound like a stupid question, but do you have to have engineering studies to go slower? I would think that would be the opposite way.
So you, you look at what's the eighty-fifth percentile of what the, what the vehicles are actually traveling on that roadway? So that's part of the engineering study. And again, in, in the, as far as, you know, driveways, the location of driveways, you have bad curves. I can tell you, Calla is one of the newer roads in town, that sight distance is certainly not an issue. And the geometry of the road is not.
There'd be a benefit.
Yeah, I don't get you.
I have a clarification, Mr. Chair, just real quick.
Go ahead.
Mr. Malaguti?
Yes.
You had said, sir, earlier about...
What?
Nothing. Go ahead.
About the speed limit. What was the average, you said? Did you say eighteen from the study?
Eighteen point five.
Eighteen point five was the average speed limit.
Correct. On this, this study, which was performed between September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, and October fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, the average speed was eighteen point five miles per hour.
Thank you.
Maybe there's something to what you just said about not really understanding. They look a lot faster than eighteen point five miles an hour going in those cul-de-sacs, I'll tell you that.
Yes, Bob.
I live on Elwood Road, and we have the soccer fields, the corn maze, the dump, Elwood's orchard, and the cut-through from Hudson. And my wife drives me crazy because I'm the Traffic Safety Chairman, and I should be able to do something to slow them down on a high-range road, I mean, on Elwood Road. So about two weeks ago, I had her stand in front of the driveway. And I drove the car back and forth on the road about three times at thirty-five miles an hour. And she finally understood what I was telling her. Standing on the side of the road, and you see a car going by you, it appears to be going much faster than it really is.
So I would like to re, I would like to just quote my comment earlier, how I have two out-of-town law enforcement officers on my road that are experts and have been in the law enforcement field for quite some time. They both have commented about the speed and being above the posted speed limit.
I'm not doubting that. What I'm saying is, to Joe's thing about the eighteen miles an hour that they record on the report, I'm just saying, when you're standing on the side of the road and a car goes by you, empirically, if you're not a law enforcement official who's not sure of that, or someone like me who's conscious of it, it looks like they're going faster than they really are.
So I just don't understand, like, why is this such a discussion? I agree with Mr. Ramsey about how, if it's going to be for, for specific streets, that it should be for all streets in the community, which I agree, and that's what I think it should be, for cul-de-sacs and dead ends. But why are we arguing this? I don't understand. And the reason why, if I may please, sir, is because the braking distance going ten miles an hour is less than the braking distance going thirty miles an hour. I'm not proposing ten miles an hour. What I personally would like is twenty miles an hour on London Dairy cul-de-sacs and dead ends. But I don't understand why this is such an issue and a discussion.
For a number of reasons. And I don't want to bring this down to dollars and cents, but I'm going to have to, because I realize that the statement that says, if it saves one life, it's worth all the money in the world you want to spend for it.
I never said that.
No, no, I'm not. That's, that's what I hear in a lot of the meetings, when, when we refuse to do some things here and there. But in this thing, which was put up by the highway depart, the federal highway department, the results of the study indicated lowering posted speeds by as much as twenty miles an hour or raising speed limits as much as fifteen miles an hour had a little effect on motor speed. They're going to drive in the speed that they feel comfortable. If the speed is lower than, than they feel comfortable, they're going to go the speed they feel comfortable at. And the problem I have as a financial person is the return on the investment to put up a lot of signs and have a lot of patrols to get something that isn't going to cause, do any difference, makes a big difference to me. We talked about the speed limits with the solar, there, I think, Kim, thirty-five hundred dollars apiece? And there's a, when I went through and did the study on the speed limits, I went in and found a town in Washington called Seattle, and they had a zero-speed limit culture that they wanted to apply. They dropped the speed limit on all the roads in town to twenty-five miles an hour, and they had big success. They enhanced their police department by two hundred percent, and they put at least three to four signs on each road, which increased their budget. Now, we don't have the enforcement to do the enhanced enforcement in this town, and we don't have the money to spending on the signs would cause the people to pay attention to the speed limits. So that's why you get the fight from us about dropping the speed limits and having to put all the speed signs to ensure that people know what the speed is when they're driving on the road. I think I've said...
It also allows our professional law enforcement officers to do what they are experts at and use their discretion. Because they are the best of the best. Our police chief talks time in, time out about our application process and how, how thorough it is, because they want to select the right person. Lowering it allows them to utilize the investment that we put into them and use their discretion to enforce the law.
And the problem we have with some of that is when we call offices, as we did in Calla, when they go to areas where they sit there for fifteen, twenty-five, or thirty minutes, and they see nothing, because these speed breakers tend to do it when there's nobody around. I've been passed on high-range, I've been told on number one on high-range road at least fifteen to sixteen times when I do thirty miles an hour. When I do thirty-five, I don't get the same thing. I've been passed on high-range road on the double line three or four times. I was on one oh two the other day where I saw six cars in the road go through a red light. So putting up more signs and doing it isn't going to take care of the small minority that are causing our problems. So that's why you hear the pushback.
Right. So back, just one last point.
I, I understand, but we're going to stop here soon. So go ahead.
Thank you. So back to my statistics that I provided earlier in the last, one of the, one of the things we voted. We had thirteen residents that were in favor of reducing the speed limit on cul-de-sacs and dead ends. Zero, other than people that were already on the Traffic Safety Committee, proposed, proposed to keep it as is. That's it.
And the ballot measure was defeated twice by, by the town. So, and that's a real number. So, so with that, I'm going to ask you to come up here in a second, Chief. Just give me one second. So for many years, probably for the better part of fifteen to twenty years, people have contacted me and asked me about speed limit in town. And they have, what I was taught by Captain Dusso, who was the number two at the police department for many years, is, is John, I'll be happy to put them out there. He says, I'll promise you one thing, these people who are asking you to put them out there are the people we're going to give tickets to.
Okay.
And that's what happened. And those people learned the hard way that they needed to slow down. I don't know if any of you know this, but we don't get any revenue from giving out violations. It all goes to the state. So the argument can't be made that we can use those dollars to, you know, to do further enforcement.
We also have to pay the office to go to court to defend the position of writing the ticket, which takes some more money out of the...
That is correct. So with that, Chief, you were, why don't you come on up here for a minute? I think we've had this discussion before. I think I've heard your, your point of view is, is if we're going to change the speed limit, change it in the entire town, and it will make it a lot easier for me to enforce, because then I would know where it is everywhere. I think I heard you make that statement at some meeting somewhere.
Sir, that was absolutely perfect. That's exactly what we said. We had mentioned that when it was brought up at the Traffic Safety Committee a year and a half ago. And of course, when, when you're a new officer learning this town, there now, when I first got hired, there was like three hundred. When Dan got hired, there was probably a hundred roads in town. And now we're up towards five hundred. And, you know, trying to memorize what every speed limit is, it's very difficult. However, these, these officers are out there patrolling every day, eight hours a day, sometimes sixteen. One of the biggest complaints that we do get is, is speed. And as I've indicated many times in the Traffic Safety Committee meetings, I'm a part of with these gentlemen here, is that we understand that speed is a concern throughout the community. And every time this comes up, we attack it the best way we know how, with personnel when they're free, with the device of the SAM unit. We have the one with the little tube that goes across the road, and we have another one, looks like a Pelican box, and it mounts on a, on a telephone pole. It's black. We get all kinds of data from, from these machines and from the officers. So just for clarification, while we're all sitting here talking about this, when we ask an officer to do a directed patrol, when a citizen calls with a concern, as Counselor Franz brought up, what we do is, depending on what the issue is, we determine, is it going to be a machine, or is it going to be an officer? The machine doesn't take man-hours. The officer does. And when we have an officer sit on a road, anyone in this room here, your road for example, we ask them to provide slips. And what a slip would indicate is that there's a form that they fill out, the date, the location, what they were sent there for, observations, violations, summonses, of that nature. This is nothing but common sense here. When people see a police, even, even, we all do, our heart races up a little bit, and then we hit the brakes, and we, we say, oh crap, I hope I'm not speeding. And you watch your rearview for a couple seconds until you're clear. Well, that's what happens. And then once we're out of the area, it goes back to normal speed and come as you go. The motion did fail for a townwide thirty. My personal opinion, I thought it was a great idea. You cannot change the state roads. So Mammoth Road, High Range, ninety-three, one oh two, twenty-eight, those would stay the same. I, I've also heard members in the Traffic Safety Committee talk about cul-de-sacs and, and dead-end roads. I live on a cul-de-sac road in Goffstown. If a neighbor of mine was doing thirty-five by my house, I wouldn't like it either. There's six of us in a small little circle. I, I get your point, sir, with all due respect, and, and I agree that if it was my street, I would want it reduced to. And to echo what was been said here tonight a couple times, I think that if the town council is going to consider it, I am not the expert on engineering, nor am I an expert on what it costs to do that. I would assume it's, it costs the taxpayers a lot of money to have that performed by an outside company. I don't think it would be unreasonable to consider looking at cul-de-sacs or dead ends. Maybe start somewhere. If these concerns are coming up in the traffic safety meetings that we attend, if members of the town council hear it and see it, if citizens call the police department complaining about it, I, I think that at some point, we should hear these concerns and what direction is the best course of action to take. And as far as, you know, where we're at statistically, when, when these directed patrols come up, we try to have an officer out there anywhere from fifteen minutes at a minimum to forty-five minutes, depending on, on their calls for service. And a lot of times, as you'll see in the data that was presented to the town manager, Calla, Calla didn't have a speed problem on, on the machines. And again, if you're a citizen on Calla, and we have an officer that lives there, and an officer that lives on Calla who works for me, has not said that they fly by his house, not to say that doesn't happen. But I think the conversation is always there. And whenever officers receive these directed patrols, as we talked about, they sit there the best they can. And again, if we, if we want as a community to write a ticket for everybody that's going five or ten over, these, these rooms here will be packed with people who are not happy. I think there is a happy medium out there. I don't know what that would be. But I think as a community and as members of the town council, I think this is a great opportunity to start the discussion. But I, I would be in favor of that.
Just one more question for him. Chief, just so we can let you sit down, or I'll let Joe ask you.
I have a question for him.
So Chief, the one thing I would ask you, you, you did describe what it's like for a person who goes past a police officer, and they look in their rearview mirror. Let me talk about what it's like to walk up to a car when you're the officer.
That's always, like I say, I think it's a lot crazier today than it ever had been before. And, you know, the officers are well-trained. It's part of the job. I'm not going to downplay it. And there's always a risk associated with any car stop that they make.
Go ahead, Joe. So I had two questions. One for the town manager, maybe you could look this up while I'm, I'm asking the chief. So the chairman alluded to two times that we hit speed control on the ballot. And my recollection was that was for main, main roads. So I don't know if you know that clarificationally, or...
I, I do. So the, the first was on the twenty twenty nineteen warrant, and I actually took a picture of it today. The, the question, it was Article twenty-five, actually, on, yeah, on the twenty nineteen warrant, shall the town vote to provide a non-binding recommendation to the town council to petition the New Hampshire Department of Transportation to decrease the speed limit from fifty-five to forty-five on that portion of one oh two, which runs from Mammoth Road to the town's border with Hudson? The second one, Mr. Vice Chairman, was last year, and the, the text of that article was essentially, do you express the non-binding opinion that the town should lower its default speed limit from thirty-five to thirty? And the reason that that's non-binding is because in order to do that, the town would have had to, let's say that that was, that that, that that article carried on the ballot, the town would have had to do some engineering studies and work under the statute to support that before they could move, before we could move forward with that.
So the two...
So that we would have to put dollars on there.
Right. So, so the two points I'm trying to make is that, that was for the entire town going from a default of thirty-five to thirty, which failed. So we know that, that's not something that people want. And we also know that on the main roads, that people travel quite a lot, quite often to go from highway to town to town, they don't want to be able to have to go to forty-five or fifty, fifty-five, or whatever it is.
But remember, just, I'm not to direct, but remember the reason we did one oh two was, and we have the fire chief here in the room is, is because the amount of... And we have the fire chief here in the room is, is because of the amount of response for extreme accidents that we have on that road.
Yeah, and so even in that case, they're like, okay, hey, you know what? I'm gonna be funny for a minute, hey, those people wanna speed, and God forbid they get into an accident, I don't know, there's, there was no, there was no push to get those, those changed. So those two places, we know for sure as a council, we should say, I think this is a very different, well, so let's put that aside for a second, it's a very different conversation. What we're talking about is not trying to add difficulty and confusion to the, the police officers, but if we were to say, on dead ends and cul-de-sac roads, it's twenty-five, I don't think that that's too difficult to understand, I mean, right? Would that be too difficult to remember? I mean, I wouldn't think so, would it, or...
I don't believe so, sir. It, it's, it's not that it's difficult for the officers at all, we all did it. You know, we all know one oh two speed limits, east and west are different depending which way you're coming and going, and, and certain parts of town are thirty, thirty-five.
Yeah.
And again, to your point, sir, dead ends and cul-de-sacs, I, I, I don't see, you know, why it wouldn't be considered. I mean, it, it does make sense, in my opinion, it's a smaller, they're smaller roads, there's not another exit out there, residents only.
And I'm just concerned especially with those that aren't posted, and I understand the cost of that. So, you know, tho- those are all things to be taken into consideration. I think this discussion is just to see what the interest of the council is in, in getting professional recommendations. For that, to say that whether it happens on Kalia or another Cala, or Sunflower, Sandy Brook, you know, that's four streets out of many that are, that are in town that have cul-de-sacs and that have dead-end roads that people, I think that live on those roads, buy, buy, buy those, those homes to feel that they could have their children play out in the street, or they could have the, the type of neighborhood where there's not lots of traffic. So maybe if the traffic is controlled to a lower speed, maybe that'll help them a little bit, so. All I'm really interested in, is making those kind of, you know, people, people trying to live and, and, and not have a lot of traffic on their roads, and be able to have kids be a little more safe, that's kind of the only thing I'm, I'm really talking about. Again, if we, the town's very clear about, you know, one oh two, one eleven, Mammoth Road, you know, that's not, that's not their concern, and I'm fine with that, but in these, I thought it was a good point that Counselor Franz made.
And I think that that, sir, would also, watching the budget presentation some two weeks ago, I believe the Highway Department had put up a, a graph of how many cul-de-sacs that they have to plow. And I don't remember exactly, but I think it was the vicinity of maybe a hundred. So that's all, again, that'd be a lot of, of roads that were, it would be positively impacted to reduce speed. And again, the signage is, is the question. And not to keep on going on this, but there are other towns around us that have a townwide, let's just say thirty, for example, and they have it, every entrance coming in town. The town of Blank is thirty miles an hour in its entirety.
Right, Hudson's one of them.
Yeah.
So anything, if we wanted to really explore this a little further, I would, for one, definitely wanna know what the dollar amount would that, would be, because sometimes, you know, and again, people just think about life and all this other stuff is worth a million dollars, I mean, you know, to save, of course, those are all right, we, we wanna, don't wanna think about the money, we wanna think about saving lives and keeping people safer, but as fiduciary people that are in the town that have to worry about that, obviously, we gotta look with, look at what that number would be as well, so. Before we'd go any further, we'd wanna make sure we have all the information in front of us before we make a decision.
So, correct me if I'm wrong on this. The state says thirty-five miles an hour, the town recommends thirty. At the end of the day, when you go to court for somebody speeding, doesn't it always go to the state default of thirty-five?
Well, I, I don't...
Like, it's hard to, I mean, you can enforce it, but...
So whatever the town road is, or, or, or a way, as we call it, a public way, whatever the speed limit is, the officer has that discretion, true or right or not. When it goes to court, it's, it's, in my terms, it's quite simple. They, they ask the officer, was this a, a way? They say yes. What's this posted speed limit? They would say thirty or thirty-five. What was the, you know, subject doing? They would indicate the speed, the judge would take it and think about it and make a decision. To your point, I, I don't know if I understood it exactly the way you asked it, but I, I hope that helps.
Well, I, I just remember from going to safety meetings lots of times, and, and I remember Chief Hart saying many, many times that, you know, that, that it's thirty-five. Even if you get caught at thirty, it's still at thirty-five, so, do you know what I'm saying?
So if I, if I could just add...
It's like a default thing for the state, even though...
As somebody who's prosecuted dozens of speed cases over the years, the, the way this, I think it's just important to get sort of the terminology correct here. So I think what you're referring to, Counselor Paul, is the fact that the speed limit may be thirty-five miles an hour, but in a snowstorm, if you're doing fifteen, and that's unsafe, you can be written for that. Kind of the opposite way that that works is, the, the statute says that if the speed limit is thirty-five and you're under thirty-five, you should be good, but it depends on the facts and the circumstances. It all comes down to the reasonableness. And I don't, so I don't wanna say that the speed limit is a, is a, is a suggestion or a guideline, it's not. It, it very much is an enforceable thing. But it sort of is, you know, what people should be doing under most circumstances, unless something else is going on that suggests that, that that speed is unreasonable. And that's why that you'll see the statute uses the words prima facie lawful. So if, if the speed limit is thirty-five and you're doing thirty-five, you should be good, unless, you know, you've got something else going on that, that affects that, that circumstance. I think that's what you're referring to from the traffic safety.
I think, I don't know, I just remember saying that it's hard sometimes to hold up in court. May, maybe Bob remembers more of what I'm trying to say.
That's exactly right, I mean, you might be on, you might be going, if the speed limit is thirty-five, and you are on a wide-open, straight road, but you're doing forty, you may be written a ticket, and the court may well conclude, based on your testimony or the fact that the officer isn't able to articulate why that was dangerous, that you're not guilty of speeding. So it goes both ways.
Yes, Bob.
Three, three things, I think Deb's referring to is saying, for a long time, and I'm going back about probably ten years, we were told when we were talking about looking at speed limits at twenty-five and thirty, that if this officer wrote a ticket at twenty-five or thirty, the judge in the district court would throw it out because he thought it was an unreasonable thing. Now, I understand that judge has retired, so maybe that's not the same situation as it is now. Judge Overhall? The second thing is, we have an ordinance, it's two thousand seven dash oh six, Speed Limits and Trucking Regulations. We first adopted it in two thousand, revised it in oh three, oh four, oh six, and oh seven. Could we use this as a thing to add any of the roads that essentially that we're gonna be changing to the speed limit of thirty? And that'll save us a bunch of problems, I would assume if we update this ordinance again. I'll give you a copy of this, John. Second thing, this is what I downloaded.
That's it right there.
That's my whole budget for next year.
Wow. Probably still more than the town councils.
It's definitely more than the budget committees.
There's some comments about the eighty-five percent percentile on that, too. They got two copies, they got that one, and then there was one that was a summary of that.
You're good, Chief, thank you.
And again, I realize that is all, but it's the only thing I can find from the Department of Transportation, and that's the bible, as far as I can tell.
Okay. Yes, Dave?
So Dave Wally, Director of Public Works, also resident of Landery, eighteen Mammoth Road. Just a few other items of consideration when it comes to speed. And I'm sure that the town engineer, John, will attest to this with studies and whatnot, and the designs of roads. But first of all, it's important to understand that the roads that are designed, they're designed for vehicular traffic, okay? So, a lot of the concerns we've heard from the considences are, when I'm out walking my dog, when I'm out jogging in the street, when my kids are playing at the cul-de-sac on the basketball hoop. Other types of activities that are going on in the streets that don't involve vehicular traffic. So if you're walking your newborn child in a stroller, and a car drives by you at fifteen miles an hour, it feels like fifty. A great deal of the subdivisions in our town, they don't have sidewalks, okay? And even if you were to set the speed limit at thirty on some of these dead ends, the forty-four dead ends that we have and the eight-hundred-and-eighty-seven cul-de-sacs, thirty miles an hour, I would argue, is too quick. Some of them are even one lane at best, and probably should be fifteen. So careful consideration would need to be given into deciding exactly what speed is desired as well. I'm sure that the chief of police could also come up and state that people are gonna, are going to drive at a speed that they feel comfortable in what the design of the road is. So if you're driving in a road that is designed for thirty-five miles an hour, you're likely gonna try and drive forty, forty-five, because you feel like you can get away with it. I think most all of us are gonna understand that mentality. And even you get, even if you get pulled over, you're probably gonna get a warning of such and be on your way. It is commonplace, as we've already noted, that when you're within your own environment, you feel comfortable, you feel as though you know the road, you know people's travel habits, so you're gonna speed in your own subdivision, because you know when people are coming and going. But we all play a part in public safety. The counselors, the police officers, and yes, you yourself, as a person that lives there. I live on Mammoth Road, I've had a white line drawn fifty feet up my driveway for years, until my own, my own children were driving. Why is that? Well, I live on a, on a main road, people are gonna whip into my driveway, a very large apron, I'm not held to the smaller restrictions that we have in the, in the town roads, so I have a wide apron. People pull in there all the time to whip around, bang you, and go the other way. My kids are out the end of my driveway, so the last fifty feet of my own driveway is off limits for my kids when I grew up. So, playing in the street, I strongly discourage it, being careful to go to your mailbox. I have a type of mailbox where you can get your mail out of the backside, I don't step out onto Mammoth Road to get my mail. So tragedy can happen at any moment, and I understand the discussion, it is important, and it's relevant to have, and I get it, I think the voters have spoken twice, I understand that, too. It is costly to put up signs, but I think there isn't a one-size-fits-all to, to the problem that we're discussing here today. And it is costly, we just talked about the tax rate and spending money, and we wanna, wanna spend every dollar where we think we can get the most bang for our buck. The amount of streets that we have, the amount of signs would have to go up. If we don't have some sort of clear and consistent message, it's gonna make the most difficult on the chief to enforce. And so those are just considerations. I ninety-three was widened, if you post that to thirty miles an hour, I guarantee you're not gonna have one car doing thirty miles an hour, and if they do, they're gonna cause an accident. So, just understand the types of roads we have that are designed in this town, the speed limit is designed for, and the fact that we don't have a whole lot of sidewalks, that's the only consideration I wanna put into that when you're thinking about changing the speed limits on any of these roads tonight. Yeah?
Ask a question about, about that comment, because I'm interested, very, it ties into what, what you were saying, too, and I'm very interested about understanding this, because it's just the first time I've ever heard it. So, let me, let me try to understand what you said. So you're saying that a, a dead-end road, or a road with a cul-de-sac, could be designed to be a thirty mile an hour road?
I, 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 I think some of them, as far as width, shoulders and whatnot, yes.
Designed to be thirty miles an hour?
They, they could be, not all of them in town are.
There's some pretty long dead ends and cul-de-sacs.
But sure, our newer roads are designed to thirty mi, thirty-five miles per hour, that's the statute.
Can't even imagine two cars going thirty miles an hour past each other with the width, I mean, they're gonna take out mailboxes, but I mean, okay. Just, some of those roads are very thin, so I, I'm just, I'm just shocked that, I'm just shocked that those were designed to, to do thirty.
No, so, not, not all, I apologize if I misspoke, not, not all have been designed that way. There, we have town, we have roads in town that were built long before design practices were in place. So if you set it in a, in a townwide blanket approach that all, all cul-de-sacs, all dead ends are now thirty miles an hour, there are some, some dead ends in this town that are not designed to handle thirty miles an hour.
Okay, so they're not all blankly, okay, thank you.
Yes, Bob?
If you read what I just gave you, you'll hear essentially what he just said. Because it's, that's where the eighty-five percentile comes in about the speed limits and so forth, and if you lower the speed limits, they're gonna drive the way they feel comfortable. If you're hot, if you put it up higher, they might not hit the highest speed, they'll drive where they feel comfortable in the road, so. That's pretty much what he said that's in that.
Alright, so this sounds like a much longer discussion. You had two-hundred-and-thirty-one roads that are either dead ends or cul-de-sacs.
Three-hundred-and-forty, oh, oh, sorry, excuse me.
Two-hundred-and-thirty-one that are dead ends and cul-de-sacs. For those of you, I mean, I, I was in Sioux Falls, South Dakota, and I had to go out to a processing plant. I got on the interstate that morning after getting there, know what the speed limit was? Eighty. Know what the speed limit is north of Tilton on ninety-three? Seventy. So I think this is a much longer discussion.
You know what the speed limit on Route three is?
Which part of it?
South Massachusetts.
Oh, it's fifty, it's sixty-five.
Yep.
Yeah.
And it's got more, more wooded spaces than ninety-three does, which is sixty-five.
Yeah, so I think what we need to do is we need to give some direction. So I think we need to give some direction to the town manager, to work with the, the town engineer, and give us some sort of, you know, ballpark of like, what are we looking at here? How, what's, what's the level of effort to, to understand this? What's the level of effort that we would need to put into this to understand this? And I, I know what, you know, traffic studies and engineering costs and everything, but what's that level of effort look like? What are we really talking about here trying to undertake? And get some sort of level of effort. Let's bring that, you know, as soon as we can, since we're in the budget season, let's bring that back to us, and then we can continue this discussion. Anything else? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
We're gonna quickly move to the budget workshop, so that we can get everybody, everybody home. So Justin, so, so next week is really the, the larger, deeper meeting. I know we had the discussion on Saturday, you know, back at the earlier part of the month. Tonight, I'm just looking for some, you know, what, what things have you been able to follow up on? Give us a little bit of an update, that may bring up more questions for next, for next Monday. But next Monday, I wanna start doing, start peeling this thing back. And what I'm looking for from the Budget Committee, as you work with them closely, is, is that, you know, if they're going to be making recommendations on where they think we should be looking, or where there possibly should be, we should be cutting or adding personnel, or services that should be changed, I would like them to bring that with them for discussion, and that it will be the first item on our agenda.
Absolutely, sounds great.
Do you have anything you wanna review with us for tonight?
For tonight, no, the budget remains as it was last Saturday. I provided you with some information that you all requested at that Saturday meeting regarding overtime as well as budget versus actuals for the last five years. Yes?
Please proceed.
Clarification on, since you prepared this and got this ready for this week, appreciate it. Yeah, I thought we were gonna talk about this a little more, too, but that's fine.
We can get further, we can definitely talk about it, that's why we're here.
Yeah, no, so, so Police Department overtime history and Fire Department overtime history. So are we saying on this report, just as an example, for FYI twenty-three, that there was budgeted overtime of seven-twenty-seven, and so far, we're at seven-thirty-six, is that how you read this? Actuals versus overtime? So, that's overtime line, right, it's not just payroll, I wanna make sure that I understand that.
So, I think if I'm understanding you correctly, you're looking at the bottom part where it says FY twenty-three amount.
Yep.
That's what's budgeted, and the actuals, the line across from it, is not FY twenty-three, that is the average of below, the previous five years below, since we are only a couple months into FY twenty-three.
Okay, but these lines, all these lines, twenty-two, twenty-one?
Those are, yes, that's the budget versus the actual, the only exception is FY twenty-three.
Overtime only.
Overtime only.
So silly, this is gonna be really silly, because I know this is not possible, I'm not even suggesting that's possible, but I'll go to all the way to eighteen, so there's no craziness about the average. So are you saying if we do away with overtime completely, we would have six-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand dollars to play with? I know that's, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that, but that's, that's, that line is overtime is six-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand, right? On two thousand eighteen, budgeted? Total?
So back in two thousand eighteen, yes.
Yeah, okay, so I just wanna make sure I'm, I'm looking at the right thing.
Yep, so if you were to go to the fiscal year eighteen budget,
Yep.
you would see those three, four divisions with those dollar amounts as the overtime budget.
So in eighteen, nineteen, we underspent, and then that's where twenty, we started to, you know, basically even, twenty, twenty, twenty thousand dollars, but then in twenty-one, obviously, much... But then in twenty-one, obviously much more. Obviously, we had a pandemic, so, I mean, during that time. And so the past twenty-one and twenty-two, do you think that the overtime was mostly due to, to the pandemic?
So I don't wanna speak for the departments here, but I think the pandemic assisted along with the difficulty in finding the appropriate staffing for our departments.
Yeah, because you're, you know, two-hundred thousand dollars is a lot to be over, and then, then almost three-hundred on twenty-two. So that, that was my only comment about, and I'm just looking at police, I'm sure the fire, same situation, but I mean, I was just looking at the top page, but that's my comment was, when we were doing the budgeting on Saturdays, that if we can take a look at some of those things and, and maybe, you know, like, like the chairman said, we're not eliminating those positions, but if we did get those filled, right, they would pay, almost pay for it by the, the overtime savings that, that, that you could, you could see with this expenditure, especially when you're over, they're almost three-hundred thousand dollars. I think we said the off, an officer was what, what, two-hundred or one-ninety or something like that?
So the total cost of an officer or?
Total cost, yeah.
All in for including their health insurance, you're looking at about one-sixty to one-ninety.
Yeah, one-sixty, one-ninety, yeah. I, I mean, it would at least help, you know, that's if it, those.
Yeah, I wouldn't say it's a one-to-one equal, but it would, it should assist in lowering the overtime amounts that we spend if we're adding those additional hours in with filling the positions.
Okay, so help, help me, I don't know if you have this broken down, but help me understand a couple of things, okay?
Absolutely.
How much of this overtime, the nine-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand dollars, is people being held over because we don't have staffing? Do we know?
Another way of asking it, yeah.
I am not able to provide that for you, I'm not sure.
So.
This man can now.
Well, chief, you don't wanna answer yet because I gotta, I have a secondary question. You can, you can wait. So the number of hours is seventeen thousand and four. Is that right?
Were you looking, all the way at the top?
So nine-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand, seventeen hours and four. Am I right?
In fiscal year twenty-two, that is correct.
Okay. And this may be a little bit more difficult question to answer. If I divide that by three-sixty-five, that's forty-six point six hours of overtime a day.
I haven't done the math on that, I'll trust your math on that.
So.
So if you have three people, if you have three people on one day working overtime, you could have twenty-four hours right there if they work an eight-hour shift.
I just wanna understand the number a little bit better. And then let me, let me explain to you why I wanna understand the number a little bit better. I may get the numbers wrong, but it could be approximate. In two thousand and twelve, we were running a run rate at the fire department of about five-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars a year in overtime. What we figured out from that exercise was, is that we were running eight-to-nine-man shifts or eight-to, eight-to-nine-person shifts, and that we were backfilling for vacations and sick time and everything else. So when we brought the new chief in, one of his charges was, was to fix the overtime line. And by doing that, you know, he had to make a number of adjustments to how he ran that. He had to hire people, he had to increase staff, et cetera, et cetera. That seemed to have worked. The only reason I'm going off of that is, is that we did it once before ten years ago. We sort of have a model, we know that we can look back at. The reason I'm trying to understand the police one is, is so that can we apply the same thinking and same model behind it if, if that in ca, if that indeed is the same issue? I don't know if it is, so that's why I'm asking to peel the numbers back to find out whether or not it is. And it may not be, and that won't be the answer. And, and also, I'll reiterate again, if there's anybody who's a certified police officer in the state of New Hampshire who wants to work here, please apply.
I think the chairman.
Have open positions.
I think chairman and I are going at, at the same, we're trying to get the same number, and he explained it the, the opposite way that I did, which was great. We're still trying to figure out the delta between the two, so, so that we could say, if we were to, and this is not a performance comment, okay? But if we were to control as a, as a town, both police and fire, control the overtime to the, to, to the place that we think is, is, is real or good, covering those vacations, covering those forced, forced overtimes because they, both chiefs are kinda saying it's not something we love to do, you know? It's not something that's, that's not only gonna allow people to stay with us longer because we don't have to, you know, force people to, to work overtime, but it'd also help us to maybe fund some other lines that I think, look, in my, in private sector, I'll tell you, it's like a bad word, overtime, you know, private sector, you, you get disciplined if you have, you know, honestly, I've disciplined people for, for using over their budget several times in my lifetime. So to me, it's like putting that word disciplined into, you know, into, into town, town stuff. So how can we be more disciplined to try to get these numbers and these dollars to be spent in a different place?
Absolutely, so the first thing, if you mind, when you're comparing private to public.
Yeah, I know the big difference, I'm just saying philosophy.
We can't shut down the police and fire station. We can't have somebody call and say, my house is in fire, and say, mm, call us back at eight AM.
But are those the real reasons why we do overtime? Is there other things that we can? Is it simply because we don't have the, the manpower? And what is the delta between that? What is the reason, what are those, as the, as the chairman just alluded to? What are those hours, maybe? I know you don't have the answer, but it's clear that we're asking for that, so maybe we get together with.
So, so one of the things again, and I wasn't back here, I wasn't here back in two thousand and twelve when this happens, but one of the things in talking with both the chiefs that I hear constantly is the minimum staffing requirement. And chief Bernard, please tell me if I'm wrong, but right now, I believe we're operating at minimum staffing. So if somebody calls out, we have no choice but to fill them because we're operating at minimum staffing. Chief O'Brien, my guess is the way we fixed it was we increased the total staffing, so should someone call out, we're no longer required to fill that position, is that? And again, I wasn't here, so this is a.
I was, I was the one who had him up there ten years ago, and he, he fixed it, so thank you.
Hey, listen, this is an education, and you know, and this is what I want the budget committee to dig into.
Yep.
So again, when, when we increased the staffing model from the, when we got the citizens petition for the, for the four individuals, that increases staffing. So right now, I know, Mr. Chairman, you have mentioned that the fire department is running at twelve, but we found that we can't sustain that. We can't sustain that for the simple reason with the current vacancies that we have, the amount of people that we were holding over, just like the police department is doing now, we're just burning out people. So I am maintaining, you know, when I started in two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen, we were dropping to the eight people. Now we are dropping no less than eleven. So that's where we're at. You know, there are some shifts that are currently running at twelve, but that is when everybody's on duty, nobody's on vacation, nobody's on a sick time. But if that first person is out, I don't fill that person.
You're a great straight man, chief. Chief Bernard, do we run, do we still run three, four, and three for, for, for patrol shift? Three, three midnights, four during the day, and, and three at night, three on the third shift? So you're running ten on patrol? Well, and, well, no, thank you for that because I appreciate that because what, what I wanna demonstrate at the moment here, and this is something that the budget committee needs to help us with, is that if I'm doing my numbers correctly, and I'm working on the forty-six point five hours, and I, I know I'm excluding sergeants and, and lieutenants in this, in this scenario, but that means I'm running sixty percent of my workforce on overtime. So I'm running, so I'm running people over every day. I'm running six people over every day. So I'm holding over people to cover patrol every day. That's what it started, that's what it sounded, which is a concern.
These numbers are sergeants?
I understand that.
So everyone's correct on some of these things here. Overtime, obviously, you can't really escape that, right? Let me just give you a rundown. Days, afternoons, and midnight shifts, we have to have a supervisor like we talked about a couple of weeks ago. We have to have that. If a sergeant takes a sick day, vacation day, workman's comp, whatever you wanna call it, we have to fill it with overtime. Now, there, there is, there is a ripple effect when we start ordering people over. And what I mean by that, I'll give you an example. As you folks worked the polls, so, so did, so did our officers, so did the firemen, so did EPW. It was an expensive week this week when I did the, the payroll today. And you look at that, and while we can just automatically think that we gotta cut the overtime, it's, this isn't a business. We, we, we budget the money as if it is. We need to put the personnel where the problems are or the needs of the community. Old, old home day, and I'm gonna present this next week. Old home day was roughly in the eighteen thousand dollar range, as I said before. Do you wanna cut that? You tell me. The elections, we're looking at about eighteen thousand dollars for the election. You're gonna think that's crazy. Well, I have a captain and I have a lieutenant who do the security planning days in advance, six, eight, ten hours at, at a minimum. It's not that easy. All the officers who worked that, some of them were ordered to work at eight hours, and then they have to go on patrol and work eight more, go home and sleep for five, six, seven hours, come back and do it again. Another area of train, is training. Training costs money. We've reduced that many times in the past where we've done training on duty. We do a lot of online, or where they have, you know, accounts they have to log into and, and go through training online to reduce overtime. We can't shoot online, we have to go to the range. We qualify several times a year. We have to do other things, defensive tactics, we have to do all the eight can't wait things. All these things are put in place that cost money. And it's quick to say, well, let's cut overtime, cut overtime. Well, we're mandated to meet a minimum of sixteen hours. Next year, it's going up to twenty-four mandated. And we're very progressive when it comes to trying to find ways to cut that. Like I said to you folks two weeks ago, one of them was the recruitment and hiring process. We're doing that during the week now. We used to do them on Saturdays. We can't, we can't cut corners with providing a safety for the community, can't do that. And we're already doing enough as it is. We have them working eight hours and then a sixteen. And I don't know who asked the question, but the question was, are we able to decipher or track ordered in versus not?
It was me.
It was you, sir, okay. So here's, we don't have a, an ordered in button. We don't have it on our time sheets when they fill out their time sheets weekly. What we do have, and I'm trying to prepare, and I have some of that, I was working on today, when an officer calls out sick, and we'll just keep it really simple for the sake of time. Justin works days, I work afternoons. Justin calls out sick, I work it because it's minimum staffing and they have to fill it. So in the back of my time sheet, I'd, I'd write Campo Sick Day, and then I'm in there for eight hours overtime. So we don't log it in as, if someone was ordered, because then we'd be writing Bernard ordered for Campo. So there really is no way to track that. But what I have prepared, I believe council agreed, that was your request two weeks ago, was can we take a look at how many times we're being ordered? It's gonna be really hard to do that unless I put out a blanket email asking if everybody's been keeping track in the last couple of years or how many times they've been ordered in. I'm sure there are a few who would be able to keep track, specifically the junior officers in the agency. And again, we minimize, captains don't make overtime, I don't make overtime. Lieutenants, very rarely do they make overtime. Sergeants and patrol, detectives, during the week, Monday through Friday. If a detective takes a sick day or vacation, we don't fill that with another detective because we don't have anybody to do that. When SRO is not in school, we don't backfill another SRO, we don't have that ability. So Monday through Friday folks don't cost us a lot of overtime when they take the day. But normal Monday through Friday, twenty-four, seven cops, that does, it costs money.
Chairman, so, so, but, so I'm, be clear. I'm not saying take the services that the overtime allows you to provide and eliminate that, that's not what I'm saying. Just wanna make, make sure I'm clear. But we do budget, okay? You would say if there's an election, now you have some numbers. Here's the amount of overtime that we need to have. There's a budget for, for a reason. And so what we were able to do in the private sector, and I understand that, I'm gonna keep saying this because y, y, you can apply these same things because they're human beings, right? You know there's gonna be certain overtime that you have to use for certain things. So that's one that could be budgeted and expected. There's gonna be the things that we're gonna have, pandemics, catastrophes, God forbid, things that happen, that you're not gonna be able to plan for. Those, that's why there's, there's an overtime budget, and we're gonna do that. What I'm saying to you, if we can measure those items and try to really keep that number as close to those budgeted overtime hours as we can, then track the ones that are out of the ordinary. So if you say, I don't know, I'm just throwing a number. In, in, in the year, there's, you know, twenty-seven things that are gonna cause us overtime. Here are the amount of hours that, that, that we feel that we've budgeted. If it goes beyond that, right, what is the reasons that that happened? And if we have that data over a year or two or three, we can then start saying, here is the authorized overtime, our budgeted overtime, and here is the unexpected overtime. And then what you do is you say justification to say, you know what? I'm gonna hire an extra sergeant, I'm gonna hire an extra two or three police officers just to cover the vacations, overtime sick. And it's not gonna be overtime anymore. It's gonna be paid, it's gonna be half, you know, one-third of the savings, or two-thirds of the cost instead of paying the overtime. And so you're able to spend less money because you've planned for that overtime by using non-overtime people. That's the, does that make sense? That's what we've done.
Perfect sense, yes.
And so that's what we're looking to say. If we can't do it this, today, we can do it tomorrow by proper planning. That's all.
And we do, sir, we do, we do plan for certain things that we know that come up. For example, a snowstorm. If we're at minimum staffing and we, we're gonna get hit with a norrester or something, we add a patrol officer or two to that shift specifically if it's a days or an afternoons because we know it's gonna be a lot more accidents, people are gonna be tied up. So we, we do them for things like that. But as you indicated, there were things that we can't predict. We had an incident on Sparhawk about a month and a half ago. Now, a situation like that on a road, that ties up personnel for quite some time. An incident like that, we can't budget how long it's gonna take. An incident like that was roughly seventy-five hundred dollars in overtime. And all these things do add up, and I'm gonna try to prepare something for, for you folks as well as the budget committee on some of these areas that we overlook. We all overlook it because we just don't think of these things when we're talking numbers. We're just talking about how many staffing we have and what we're budgeted for. But a lot more goes into it than just that.
And, and the example I, I, I've just talked about a few minutes ago, if you were to look at the, the, that Justin put together, if the five-year average is thirteen thousand five hundred and thirty, and we said four, and we said that, say, fourteen thousand, okay, is the budget of, of what we're talking about. And you were able to justify over the past three years that, look, you know, counselors, you know, just to keep you, keep an idea, we've been running his fourteen thousand budgeted hours, and that takes care of not only the ones that we talked about that we were expecting, but also it all has a, a consistent number in there that's built in of what we're running over the budget. So what I'm saying is that when you come to us, you say, look, if I can save this amount of money and, and for dollars, if I had two or three more police officers to fill that expected over.
Sure.
You get what I'm saying, so?
Yeah, and, and, and sir, I, I think that would be a lot easier, again, and I, I will bring back to you everything and then some that I can for you folks as well as the budget committee. I, I've been speaking with Justin for the last several months as well as the town manager about ways to, to save. And as you heard me say a couple of weeks ago, I'm pretty frugal. And, you know, whatever ways that we can find, much like the fire chief did, you have my attention, I'm willing to take direction and figure it out. I just wanted you all to know that there are certain things that we just can't cut corners on, and with all due respect, we're, we're gonna do what we have done for the last, you know, twenty years that I've been here, is, is be financially responsible, and we'll do that.
And I think this is, this is in reverse to all the conversations that people are having about the four offices. This is all talking about in a perfect world, we absolutely one-hundred percent need those four offices in order to get this to even be touched, and even to, to think about us trying to control the overtime, we need to be fully staffed. That's step one.
Right, correct.
And then step two is then looking at this, from a fiscal standpoint of saying, can we hire even more than that, right? To kind of take care of the overtime, because again, you're paying time and a half to the people that are overtime.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and so if you could just pay regular time, there's a savings there.
Yeah. And, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, I think that the, what we've identified here based on the, your two questions and requests is we may not have the data in, in the perfect form this year to be able to answer the question exactly right, but we'll certainly make available whatever we can to try to get as close to that answer as we can. I think something that we should, we should, we've identified that we need to improve going forward is it can't be that hard, I think, probably to track forced overtime. And I think that is a measure of healthy or unhealthy staffing, and I think it would inform these discussions going forward, and it's something that we should, we should try to implement if we can.
And, 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 you know, I'm like a crazy person when it comes to charts too, like I like to see the deltas between as you're losing officers, have, has your forced overtime gone up? And you could see that, that's maybe a cause because the numbers are telling you that. That's, I see, I see a lot of. And you could see that, that's maybe a cause, because the numbers are telling you that. That's, I see, I see a lot of those, those connections.
Right.
To, to your point, sir, I think we should, we, we could figure something out on how to track a forced over. But again, sometimes, again, just to reiterate, some of these things are also caused when guys take vacations or, or people had COVID. They go, they go, whatever, there's hundreds of reasons why they may not be at work, but we will work on that. I'll get with the IT guys if there's something that we can't somehow put into a computer program to track that.
And the last thing I'll say is that you're going to see that, that 15,000 of, of planned overtime, but you're going to also see there's that 2,500 that happened. Those 2,500 or 3,000 hours always happen, but they're for different reasons every year, but they always happen. So you plan to have 3,000
Sure.
hours covered, no matter, you, you may not say that you're going to be doing a snowstorm maybe. Maybe another day you're going to be doing something else, but you're definitely going to be doing it because every year it's 3,000, no matter what. You'll find that.
Anyone else for the chief? Let's not get lost in the numbers here completely, okay? What I am trying to say is, is my concern is the same concern I had in 2012. We had eight people on a truck, we were running dead man pumps, it was dangerous. Saying the same thing about overtime here.
Yep.
I'm saying the exact same thing here. We are running, if I'm, if I'm including sergeants, means I'm probably running about 45% of my people over.
This also includes dispatch, just so you are aware.
I'm running 45, 40 to 45% over every day. Every day, 365 days a year, right? I understand people will fix the overtime part. I'm also concerned that the officers, the dispatchers, all the people there are getting the proper amount of rest so that nobody gets hurt. People get tired. Things happen. So I think we need to highlight that as well as we're going through this. Our people are our greatest resources. That's my number one concern. So with that, chief, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so Budget Committee, any questions from you guys? Yes, Tim?
You're talking about, Joe, you mentioned the hours, like overtime hours, you're not talking about eliminating it to zero, right?
No, 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 just trying to
You're just trying to find that balance between man-hours
Yep.
and money, because there's a certain point where it's, it's cheaper to use overtime than it is to pay the extra 80,000 for
Right, right, right. And, and my, my comment was just saying, is this, is this the actual overtime? So if we took all that out and put it to zero, wouldn't we really do that, obviously, but that's, that's the savings that it would be? What I'm saying is now we have to determine, since we know the number, how much of that is, is budgeted and always going to be budgeted, and how much do we go over, and we need to go over every year? And see, see the delta between the two and control it more, be, be more disciplined with hiring enough people so that we can eliminate that. So that's not like somebody's doing something wrong, it's because we don't have enough people to do it, that's why it's happening.
Because I was thinking the first thing we should find out is, where's that cross point between hours and dollars? So it's cheaper to do overtime, and at this point, at this many hours, it now costs more money to do overtime than hiring another officer.
Benefits and everything else.
And then once you find that center point, you know this is a point we can hire officers, but if it's still dangerous for the number of hours that these guys are working overtime, then maybe that justifies the cost increase. Because right now in this environment, you're trying not to spend more money.
Yep.
So overtime is cheaper, but if that overtime is still putting health issues on, like overworking the officers, then that cost increase could be justified, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So those are the numbers we need to see.
And that, and that conversation goes to the, the fact that we talk about, you know, we know that there's vacations, we know that there's sick time, we understand that. And you know what? Officers want to, I'm sure, get overtime, not like eliminating completely. It's part of their, part of their take-home pay, they, they actually budget for that in their, their home. But what the, the issue is, is when you say, okay, I'm going to be okay to work 56 hours a week, you know, it's 16 hours of overtime. I'm happy with that. When they get forced overtime on top of that, that's where they get the safety issues, concerns, and, and some. So we really hone in on that, and that's why town manager and chief will get together and, and try to segregate that and get us some real numbers on it if we can.
So I just got
It also depends on the salary, Tim. Where those cross points are.
I just got a text from someone who I know is an RN, says this is the same thing that they're facing, people get tired, mistakes get made. That's my message.
Yep. Amen.
So with that, yes, Steve?
When they go on traffic detail, is that overtime? Is, is that a number in there, or where's that, where's that tracked?
That's a completely separate pay code, that is not included in this. This is just overtime for
Revolving account that is not in this. Yeah.
Chairman, one more question, I'll shut up.
Hey, this is what it's for.
These, I understand 100%, this is the backup of all the payroll for everybody?
That, no.
What is this, if you could explain this?
That is the budget versus actuals you asked for.
Okay, so it's the actual detail?
You asked for budget versus actual for all the GLs for every department. I didn't give you the Budget Committee, I'll tell you right now, the Budget Committee Department is under $1 for the past 20 years.
Perfect, okay.
The rest are all there.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I knew the difference. Thank you.
And Mr. Vice Chairman, what we're going to do when we, when we really get into it on the 21st is to go through this slide nine. And, that's the version that has my notes, uh, present, but we're going to go through this slide nine right here and compare the actual data that you have in front of you in that big packet with what increases we're recommending this year, line by line.
Right. I want to wait on all this, when we have all five of them, so we do it once. And then Budget Committee is also going to be up here with us, and we're going to dig in.
So just Yeah, absolutely.
I'm still confused, it's still overtime.
What, police details?
I'm talking about hours. We're, if you're talking about how many hours an officer works, they have overtime detail for traffic duty, don't they, sometimes?
So you have, so you have two different accounts. So, so The, these dollars are what's coming out of our budget. If they're doing overtime on a detail
Yes.
that's not in these hours.
Correct, so your point about how many hours is even higher?
That's correct.
Yeah.
That is correct.
But aren't those detail hours 100% volunteer?
Yeah, I believe the answer is yes, except there are some instances where there's an emergency detail that would be paid as OT, is that correct?
But, but emergency details would be paid out of our budget.
So, Mr. Chairman, just to clarify to, to, to what you just said. So that's why I gave you the examples earlier. So if I said 56 hours, I'm an officer, I want to work 56 hours, I've built in that eight hours of a detail. And, and, and I wanted to do that because I wanted to do a traffic stop for, for, for some construction thing, that was good. That's what I want to break, bring home, 56 hours worth of overtime. Then I get forced to do another eight hours. That's what I'm talking about is the issue, and I think Chairman is as well, the forced overtime.
Chief, can you tell us what the, what the max number of overtime hours that an officer is supposed to work in a, in a week or a payday?
Max is 72.
72 a payday?
72.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Chief, other chief.
Mr. Chairman, on Saturday, the council had asked for a report on the current inventory of our vehicles. So I made spreadsheets for all of you that indicate what we have for inventory for vehicles, the year, the amount that it was purchased for, which ones we own, which one currently on lease. And it breaks it down into the mileage, the hours, hours per year, and average, average mileage per year.
That's great. And, um, if you can share, give one to the chairman of the Budget Committee too, Steve. And he can, um, okay, and again, we're going to get into this on detail on the 21st. All right, so Budget Committee, need you to look at this as well. Looking for you to have questions. I promise you, I'm going to keep asking you that question until you ask questions.
In the Budget Committee's defense, I have heard from them through emails and other avenues asking questions.
Absolutely. Listen, I, I want us to dig in here and get to the bottom of some things so that we can square this thing up. You know, we don't, we don't get an opportunity to do this too often. We tried to do it last year, we didn't get all the way there, so let's get all the way there this year. Anything else on budgets?
Are you looking for questions tonight, or are you looking for questions next week?
November 21st. Bring your pajamas, we're going to be here for a while. That was supposed to be funny.
It was very funny, just some pajamas out there.
I'm afraid of what they might come in. All right, anything else for the, for budgets? All right, I need a motion, oh, sorry, I don't have minutes yet, right, they're not, we just got them? Let's put, November 7th minutes, let's put them off, we just got them.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So we can review them. Do I have anything for liaison reports? Do town manager report, you have anything, I'm sorry, Deb, go ahead.
I, I, um
I, I didn't see out of this, I barely
Well, it's not really a liaison report, but I am on the Water Committee, we're in a meeting today from 9:00 to noon. There's going to be a lot more grants opening up in new areas, areas that I've been talking about. I really think that Mr. Presland's comment on our, our water plan really needs to be there to act on taking advantage of this stuff. The other thing that I am aware of, when you do apply for these programs, you apply part loan, part grant, or all grant, but 45% of the loans are forgiven. So when you're looking at the numbers, it's real important to understand, we might have to pay upfront in a loan, but 45% of that loan will be forgiven because it is contamination. And we really need to, there's a loan out there right now to get a specialist to do a study to check our, I'm going to say this wrong, I always do. Mag-
Magnesi?
Manganese?
Manganese. And our arsenic levels in the town, because we really need to add that to our PFOA and our PFOSs. We really need to be on top of this. I, I guess I would like the opportunity to set an hour or two aside with Mr. Malaguti to go over everything that I've learnt. It's very important that we act before there's no money left. And then everything falls on us, the taxpayer.
Yeah, and I believe all this we talked about needs to be part of the, the charge of the utilities committee, utilities committee or commission or whatever it is in the name we come up with it on.
That was the other part of my, I wanted to add that that's really necessary.
Yeah, so, and that's in our, that's in our plan to get that together, right?
That's right, that's in process, Mr. Chairman.
And, but I do know you're overwhelmed right now with the budget. But I do know that my time here is going to be very limited, and I'd like to be able to do it in this capacity
Absolutely.
before I don't have that time anymore.
I'm happy to schedule time to sit down and talk about that.
All right, thank you. Sorry.
No worries. Anything, town manager report?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of things. One is, the suggestion was made, or I guess the question was raised is a better way to put it. In public comment, whether we would allow construction to take place, large apartment buildings to take place without adequate provision being made for water or sewer. I can tell, I can assure you and the public that that is not something that would happen in, in Londonderry. There are larger questions about where all of our water and sewer needs are going to be met, but that particular suggestion is, is not a concern at this time. Mr. Chairman, I heard something else in public comment that I think is appropriate for me to comment on as the town manager. Because I think the suggestion was made, or at least the question was raised, whether Councilor Franz has a conflict of interest for voting on a matter at the Traffic Safety Committee. I think it's fair for me to comment on that, because although I'm no longer the town attorney, and I don't adjudicate complaints against councilors or any other community official, I do think it's appropriate for me to comment on comments that call into question a councillor's integrity. And I want to make it clear that Councilor Franz has not asked me to address this, it's something that I am doing of my own accord. Under the Town Ethics Code, a conflict is when a community official uses, votes, or acts on a matter in which they have a direct, immediate, and definite personal or pecuniary interest, which is capable of being demonstrated. Under our Town Charter, Mr. Chairman, a conflict of interest is defined in Section 6.2 and 6.3. And it makes it fairly clear that the personal interest that creates a conflict of interest is a financial interest. Section 6.3 makes the same thing clear. I want to make it very clear that any resident has the right to come forward in public comment and suggest, question, or even directly accuse an official of having a conflict of interest or committing misconduct. But I think it would be irresponsible for me to let that pass without looking at how our charter and Ethics Code actually define conflict of interest. I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, that if a resident has confusion about whether someone has committed a conflict of interest, I would be happy to discuss that with them by telephone. I know you would be happy to discuss that with them by telephone, and I know the town attorney would be happy to discuss that as well. I happen to have a high opinion of Councilor Franz's integrity, but it makes no difference. People who have high integrity do sometimes commit mistakes and errors. And in that case, there is a mechanism to make a complaint against the town councillor or any other community official. And that is to reference the Ethics Code that is available on our website. That is what I have to say on that matter, Mr. Chairman.
Seeing nothing further?
Oh, wait, two more things. Sorry, I just remembered them.
Okay.
I just wanted to know where the sister city lies? And the Santa accommodations at the airport? Santa needs help with the helicopter landing, and I just wanted to know where that stood, or if we can or cannot help Santa that day?
Yes.
The guy's a helicopter?
Gets flown here, the helicopter at the airport museum.
Well, usually he has to land his sleigh in a secret place and get picked up.
Exactly.
That's what I thought, okay.
That's why he needs help.
Councilor Paul, as we've discussed, I'm, I'm happy to make the town's resources available to make it a nice day for the children, so that Santa can get where Santa is going. The sister city matter, to be very frank, is, is not top on my priority list at this very moment, but it is on my list, and I promise to return to it.
I, I ask because I got a phone call.
I, I understand.
So, all right, thank you.
With that, I'll accept the motion to adjourn. Whos in favor, simply by saying aye?
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are meeting next Monday on the 21st. Plan on spending some time here, we're going through the budgets in detail. Good night.